Welcome to the April 25th, 2023 City Council Work Session. I'd like to turn it over to City Manager Bendah to walk us through the agenda overview.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, good afternoon. We have our work session before us. Again, just as a change so that we can leave a broader chunk for the budget reconciliation discussion, I'm proposing moving the business item briefings forward. You'll see there, there's a couple, planning, our community planning department will talk to you about the proposed zoning ordinance amendment for child and adult daycare centers, say that fast. Alicia Finney, our city clerk, will engage you on our school board appointment process. Our city attorney, Matthew Freeman, will talk to you about the resolution requesting that the rate be lowered from $1.11 to 89 cents. And then we'll move into the budget reconciliation work session. But before we do that, I'm going to ask Kent White, who's here with us. He's been a part, or the liaison to the group that's looking at the process, that's looking at the two high schools, three middle schools, 11 elementary schools, and where to go next. He'll do that. Ken, I was teeing you up for, I don't think you're first, you're just before that, but I love how ready he is. I just love, that is, that is the embodiment of Kent White right there. That is the embodiment of Kent White. But I'd ask, before we turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor, if I may, since we've last met, great opportunity. In our communications department, we were able to hire a new director. While she's new to the position, she's been a part of the organization, she has a very lengthy career here in Lynchburg. She actually ran the Downtown Lynchburg Association for a bit, then we stole her away, and she's been in economic development, been Marjett's right arm, and then, Marjett, I don't know that she'll ever forgive me, but we went through a process, and we've hired Anna Benson. Anna Benson's here, she's our new director for communications. So just wanted to say, greet her and thank her and introduce, obviously, you guys mostly know her, but just wanted you to see her. So, back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks so much, and congratulations, Anna. Okay, so move on to our business item briefings. Thank you, Mr. Bendah, again. We'll go to item number one, Proposed Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Child and Adult Daycare Centers. This item will appear before Council for Action on May 9th, 2023. Mr. Kevin Henry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Did have, oh, that would help, right?
Oh, other way.
Other way. There we go. Hey, it's the first for everything. So, yeah, the amendment before you tonight is child daycare ordinance amendment and zoning ordinance, really twofold here. It's eliminate all area and frontage requirements for daycare centers in commercially zoned districts, and eliminate area and frontage requirements for daycare centers with up to 12 individuals in residential districts. Those are our smallest of small daycares, those are typically referred to as family day homes, and why that we're doing it. Right now, it's become problematic for some daycares, given the regulations that are on the books right now, from opening in commercial and residential settings. Those are the area and frontage requirements we're referring to on that table there that you see on top. We're striking through some of those numbers. That's referring to the more residential side of things, the 13 to 20 would be the new standard. A lot of our parcels in the city are, don't meet some of those standards, so it's allowing a little bit more flexibility for folks with smaller parcels to open up daycares. The daycares still all have to meet all of the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Social Services standards. They regulate quite a bit, you know, well beyond the zoning ordinance as far as daycares go. As mentioned, planning commissioner reviewed this in March and recommended approval, and it's going to council in May. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Are there any questions from council at this point? No? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Henry, appreciate it. All right, let's move on to the school board appointment process. Ms. Finney.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, at our last meeting on April 18th, we all discussed in public that you wanted to hold your school board appointment process in open session. And then from there, I just wanted to also give you a proposed schedule and go over it with you all, so we can iron out these dates. So, on May 9th, I have scheduled you all to hold your first public hearing. That really is the benefit for the candidates to come and talk to you about their qualifications, and then also for parents to weigh in. Historically, council has continued that public hearing, so I've scheduled that for May 23rd. At that time, I imagine that you all will close the public hearing, and then while remaining in open session, decide what candidates you want to interview. From there, the week of June 5th, we'll hold a slate of special meetings to interview these candidates. Again, it'll be open to the public and livestreamed, and then on your June 13th meeting, during general business, you'll discuss which candidates to appoint to the three new terms. That is all I have. If there's any questions, if the schedule looks good, I'll go ahead and begin our process.
Looks good to me. Any questions for anybody? No?
Thank you all.
Okay. Oh, yes, Dr. Wilder?
I am out of town June 5th. I believe, yes, just so you know.
Just the one day?
Yes, well, I'm off the whole week, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, I might need to pivot a little bit, but, okay, thank you.
How's this gonna do everything? Those dates are okay with you?
The week before, so June 5th week, it works good.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Finney, appreciate that. All right, moving on to item number three, the City Council initiated a decrease of the city's real estate tax rate from $1.11 per $100 to 89 cents per $100. This item will appear before Council for Action on May 9th. Mr. Matthew Friedman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. As City Council recalls, a majority of City Council had directed myself and the City Manager to bring back the appropriate paperwork as it relates to establishing a real estate tax rate of 89 cents in the city. As you can see from your packet, a proposed ordinance is attached for your review and discussion this evening. Certainly, as part of this process, in looking over this ordinance and talking about if there's any questions, I would encourage you to ask them now to the City Manager and his staff who are here. There's also the Commissioner of Revenue who is here, if there's any questions as it relates to the change in the calendar year for the public service corporations, you know, and the retroactivity of the ordinance as it relates to that. So, I don't have much more to offer than here it is for your discussion.
Great. Any questions from council?
You know, as I've mentioned before, that I assumed that that ordinance was going to be fairly easy to amend. It was changing the rate from $1.11 to 89 cents, changing the date from whatever, 2012 to the new fiscal year, July 1st, and that's almost something that could have been done on the fly. It's also something that, you know, previous city attorneys, when they would see the direction and the will, they wouldn't kind of try to put up obstacles, and they would actually say, okay, they're going to want this ahead of time. And, you know, I am disappointed, and especially seeing how easy that could have been done. You know, I wish we would have just maybe said, hey, let's take a two-minute recess, and we could have made those amendments, but I'm glad we have it now going forward, so.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes, thank you for the information, and thank you for your due diligence and research and information. I don't, normally, when we do something on the fly, we're criticized for that, so I would commend you for taking your time to review the statute, and I thank you for your service to our city and our community for what you're doing. Again, I want to make sure it's on record, I do not agree with the 89 cents per 100. I agree with the City Managers of 105, because I know the challenges we have in our community, I know the needs that we have in our capital project, projects over like 500-plus million dollars, whatever it is, there's so many needs in our community and our city, needs in our school system. I want to make sure all of our staff members receive raises, because they're so, especially during a time right now, it's challenging to hire persons, and I don't want to see persons say, they don't appreciate me, so they want to leave. So as far as teachers, as far as city workers, as far as sanitation workers, I mean, it is hard to fill positions currently, so I understand that. So, as a city, we need to be doing what we can to make sure that our city workers are compensated, that they are appreciated, that they feel appreciated, and they know that they are valued, especially coming out for COVID and working through all of that crazy time period, we want to make sure they are valued. And also, I want to look at over the past 20 years in our city, how the, if you look at the record, and you look at the status financials of our city, how it's been a well-managed financial city. Look at all the audit reports, look at all the accommodations, the state awards, we run several state awards because of the accounting practice of our city financial lead staff members. We have been a well-managed city financially, and we can look at the growth of our city, and we look at the property value of our cities up, because the city has been managed well, and because the city is growing. The city has grown over the past 20 years, it has shown a great worth, the investments made in a downtown area, the investments made in infrastructure, the investments made in our water sewer system, all those capital projects, the CSO project, all those projects are because of the taxpayers, because of the investment that has been made by prior city councils, is why the city is thriving today. So I want to make sure everyone and our citizens understand, because of these investments, is why our city is growing, is why our city has been a well-managed city, because that's why persons become, let's break, as a destination place, not just to come through and pass through, but also to reside here and live here. It's shown by the growth over the past 20 years, from 60,000 residents or so to over 80,000 residents, it shows that persons are coming here, and businesses want to come here and do business here because of the growth, because of the excitement of what's happening in our city council. So I want to make sure that's known on record. Thank you.
Councilor Madola?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for preparing this document, which I will not be supporting, because I think the rate was decided on the fly, and I'm not really going to get into focusing on the merits of a sustainable rate at this time, but thank you very much for doing this.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Ms. Friedman. Okay, let's move on to our budget work session agenda items. We will now hear from a very excited Mr. Kent White, who's very prepared for his presentation on the Lynchburg City Schools Facilities Plan Community Engagement.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of City Council. So about a month ago, you had your joint meeting with Lynchburg City School Board, where we outlined the process for the development of the master plan. We're now entering into the community engagement phase of this effort, and so our consultant, MGT, will be in town next week to host three in-person meetings. They will be Monday, May 1st, at Bedford Hills Elementary, Wednesday, May 3rd, at TC Miller Elementary, and Thursday, May 4th, at Heritage Elementary. All of them will be at 6:00 PM, and transportation and childcare requests can be accommodated. You can just simply use the link at the top of the screen to make those requests. This is really one of many opportunities for our residents to weigh in on the school facilities, whether it's renovation and construction, whether it's consolidation of elementary school buildings, rezoning, and programming, so all of that feedback will be incorporated from those meetings. This same survey that will be at the in-person meetings will also, is also available online at that link, lcsedu.net/masterplan, so folks can enter their feedback there. And ultimately, the consultant, GT, will use this feedback along with stakeholder interviews, which many of you participated in, and a lot of the other data that they've gathered to develop alternatives. Those alternatives will be available in June for the second round of public feedback and comment, where the community again gets to weigh in. We'll bring, then ultimately bring those alternatives and that feedback back to you on August 8th for your next joint meeting with the Lynchburg City School Board. Really appreciate the opportunity to just put this in front and center in front of everybody. We really want to encourage residents to make their voice heard and offer their feedback as they feel comfortable. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions at this time? Councilman Helgason?
I had a good meeting with the consultants, and the big overarching theme, obviously, where we've talked about consolidation for a number of years with the school board, which they've done nothing with that. The school enrollment plan, they've been lacking it for many years, looking at what the actual enrollment numbers are. We look at the fact that we've lost like 2,000 kids in the last 20-plus years in the same number of buildings. And had a good meeting with the consultant, he understood the very low participation rates with regarding our public school system, where about 40% choose to send their children elsewhere. So I do hope that the, you know, eyes are opened, and the fact that a good plan comes forward, and it's not just because, you know, kind of like what we saw with the charrette of the Parks and Rec Plan, when two people say, hey, let's close Ford Avenue and just have bicycles on there, a couple lanes, hopefully that doesn't rise to the top to be a recommendation, but they'll recognize that there's lots of opportunities with the buildings that we do have, that they're not going to say, hey, we've lost thousands of kids, so we'll be spending more money on building brand-new facilities. We will use the ones that we have, the ones that are, the properties that have declined, you can easily say, hey, those are the ones that are going to be consolidating. You know, I wish the schools would have done this years ago, it would have made this, but I guess they have gotten ample funds off the general operating funds, and so they haven't had to consolidate, they haven't had to do anything. You know, when you look at the city, we're 50 square miles. It's not like closing a school in one of the counties, where their kids may ride on the bus for 50 minutes or an hour and a half. Some of the elementary schools are so close that you may pass three of them on the way to the one that your, you know, your attendant zone is. And so I do hope that this report will come back very well, had a very good frank discussion with the consultants, I hope others did. Seem to take a lot of, hopefully, what I said to heart, because I've been here for a long time, I've noticed the problems, I've noticed the problems that haven't been addressed, and now we have a very large school budget, very large staffing to student ratios, we have lots of schools that have, you know, probably 30% of what a normal elementary school would house. Instead of an average of 550, we have some schools with 170, 160 students in them. Consolidation is critical. We've just got to be efficient, especially with taxpayer resources. So, I'm looking forward to seeing the report, and that it's not going to be just, you know, when a couple citizens say, hey, don't close my school, that that rises to the top, but we'll look at this objectively and factually and say, yep, here's what we got to do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That's it, Joe. I think consolidation is good, but you want to keep the younger children close to home. That's very important. That's, at least that's what I've been hearing. You want to keep your children close to their neighborhood as possible.
And I think some of the schools, what they are is, they'll make them a lot closer, actually, because some of the schools, they get on the bus because of the 1972 integration, they bust them past three elementary schools on the way to an elementary school. It'd be nice to say, hey, you can walk across the street or go a half a mile, ride your bicycle, and then you're at school, as opposed to going clear across town. I think that would make it better for neighborhood schools.
Anyone else? Council missions?
And that, what Councilman Helgason said is actually the case, I know that for a fact. With my son at Bedford Hills, there's children that are being bused from the complete opposite side of the city into Bedford Hills, and it would be good to try to keep kids closer to home, like you said, and there's ways that we can do that. One of the other things that I discuss with the consultants that I think is something that I hope is taken to heart, is that we don't need to expand any more programs with these buildings as they become available. We don't need to expand any more government schools with these buildings as they become available. I know that there's definitely a need for more affordable options for preschool and things like that within the city. I would like to see if there were opportunities once some of these buildings become available, if they're, you know, habitable, to do that, to look into some private public partnerships where we could use the building that we have to help cut costs, but we don't need to put any more burden on the taxpayers for that to happen.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes, thank you, thank you so much. Thank for the information, I really appreciate it. It's great to have the meetings at a variety of locations all over our city, and also that they are providing transportation and childcare. A lot of times, it's a barrier to certain parents, like single parents, it's always a barrier, especially if you don't have transportation, it's definitely a barrier. So thank you all for working together to have them on diverse locations, also providing transportation, also providing childcare. I think it's important for our citizens, and their input is crucial. They want to make sure their voice is heard when it comes to their child's education. They don't want one segment of the population speaking for them, want to make sure our children's parents' voices are being heard. Yes, we looked over the past 20 years, the population of the school system has gone down, we've noticed that, but 20 years ago, there weren't as many options. There are so many options, from religious schools to various other schools, from a variety of different schools you can go to. Some persons have a variety of reasons for going to certain schools, because of religious reasons, or because maybe the state school system is too urban. So there are a variety of reasons why a person goes to various schools. So I appreciate them, they have the freedom to do so. But it's our obligation to make sure we're supporting our schools, and make sure our schools in Lynchburg are the best schools, that we give them the option to make sure we have the best needs for our children, especially those that can't afford to go any other place. Make sure, we make sure our kids have the best education we can afford, that we can give them. Other things, our school systems, our schools are currently about 50-plus years old, you know, so I think on the average, so definitely need some, have some challenges with our school buildings, the city owns the building, so it's our obligation to make sure we take care of them, so we definitely have options that we must take care of those facilities. And also, 20 years ago, you didn't have all the things you need now. You have to have, 20 years ago, we didn't have computer labs, you didn't have all the other, didn't have so many behavior issues, you didn't have as many special labs 20 years ago. So 20 years ago, schools were different. So now, some of the empty space that might have been for a classroom might be used for a computer lab, or might be used for behavior modification classes, or various things like that. So our school system over the past 20 years has changed drastically, as well as our population and demographics have changed drastically over the past 20 years. So I appreciate the study, I appreciate the opportunity that our citizens have a voice, that their voice can be heard during these sessions, and I just want to encourage everyone to make sure your voice is heard, that you are part in the conversation. Don't be intimidated by anyone, make sure your voice is heard about your child's education. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it, Mr. White. All right, moving on to item number five, the fiscal year '24 proposed budget reconciliation. Mr. Bendah, before we start, I just wanted to say that last, our last meeting, the reconciliation portion of the night was kind of stifled and it cut short, and I know that your staff has done a lot of work to present tonight, so I would like to give the opportunity to let you guys do your presentation first and get through it, and then we'll ask our questions, like we've been doing with all the other presentations tonight, because I know, like I said, you've worked really hard, so without further ado, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. So, flung to my left here is Ms. Donna Witt, and obviously Gregory Patrick, Chief Financial Officer, Deputy City Manager. I've asked Donna, we want to get this right, so she's going to walk you through the presentation about the 89 cent rate and what's included. We heard from council unanimous about public safety in there, 5% GWI in there, and then also a conversation about, sorry, third, oh, funding for Lynchburg City Schools at a certain value. So, we're going to walk through that, and then, to meet that rate, we had to work with city departments, not all of them, because we had heard from you about public safety and kind of being put over here, and some other people being put over here, so we had to solicit a certain amount of departments, not all of them, for reductions to help meet this rate. So Donna will walk you through 89 cents, what that includes, she will then kind of give you a bridge to a conversation about reductions. Wanted her, because she better than particularly Greg and myself, to talk about the organization. Donna, I don't want to put you on the spot because of the number of years of service, but it's got to be 20-plus at this point, right?
Twenty-three and a half.
Twenty-three and a half, 23 wonderful, wonderful years. So she's going to tell you by way of context what the organization has done in the last several years as it relates to budgets, and the things that we've requested from departments, and what the city's done in that. Dr. Wilder, you were talking about the city's growth, and you talked about moving from a 60-some-thousand population city to an 80,000 population, and Donna's going to talk to you a little bit about that, and what that has meant to the organization about providing services. And then, we sent out last night, and I think maybe Alicia has passed out at your positions there, kind of the reductions that we've taken to help meet the budget. Donna, in her presentation, is just going to highlight some of the ones that maybe you're going to hear back from your constituents about. So with that, Madam Mayor, if it's okay, I'll turn it over to Donna Witt.
Thank you. So, this is looking at an 89 cent real estate tax rate. So it does include the 2.1 million for Lynchburg City Schools, 2.6 million for a 5% general wage increase for city employees, 3 million for the public safety employees targeted compression and progression plans, so that is in. Also in are is $860,000 new police positions and operational support, including a police captain, two police officers. These were formerly in, under the COPS grant, so they are now through that grant and need to be moved to the general fund and be paid for by the general fund. Three police cadets, those cadets were formerly paid for with managed vacancy funds, and this moves them into the general fund. A crime scene technician, public safety IT security analyst, a part-time CIA coordinator for accreditation, and 5.8 FTE hourly reserve officers, and this is to help put officers back on the street. Also included is $530,000, this is other new public safety positions and operational support, so the emergency services, hourly funding, six firefighters that are ALS and three firefighters that are BLS. There's no funding included for these. They have applied for the grant, and we will hold funding until the recruitment begins, but these positions are in, they're just not funded. The child protective services investigator, two family services specialists, and converting to part-time to full-time family services specialists, these are all 85% funded by state and federal grants, so there's 15% local funds, a public safety analyst for the fire department, a public safety network admin for police, and the two refuse operators. And the two refuse operators are basically under public safety because of safety and health in our neighborhoods, to make sure that the trash, bulk and bulk, bulk and bulk is all picked up, so vermin don't get it, all of that. So, that's why they're included under public safety. $320,000, these are for the new constitutional officer position and operational support, so the assistant Commonwealth attorney, the J&amp;D Relations Legal Assistance, moving from a grant fund to the general fund, part-time to full-time legal support receptionist, the circuit court hourly funding, and two deputy sheriffs. These are additional positions. Also, $220,000 for the two cybersecurity positions, one's an analyst and one is an engineer. Also included is $192,000 of technical adjustments. This is related expenses for the two positions for the sheriff's office, an auto attendant with a recurring of $3,000, there's a total cost of $40,000. A piece of that is one-time funding for emergency services. In general services, this is an ongoing grant expenditures, the revenues were budgeted. This is really an accounting correction to make sure the grant expenditures for this grant were recorded properly. For the police department, this is new funding for flock safety and recreation programs. This is also a technical change that we need to fix, $31,975 to make sure we've accounted for their program revenues correctly. And then for the public library, we're actually reducing the appropriation there by $165,000, and this is removing some recurring costs for the River Ridge branch that did not go forward. There's $170,000, this is the new police take-home car program, the 170,000 is reoccurring funds, there is also one-time funds to purchase the vehicles, the total cost is about $1.1 million. So, just kind of a pause here before we go into what departments cut. Everything changed with the recession, and I would tell you, I came in 1999, I used to work at Liberty University when things at Liberty University were not so rosy, and when I came here, I did the first budget, I was in Buildings and Collections and looked at the budget, and I thought, wow, they got a lot of money to work with, and I was a little surprised. And it's kind of how things went till about 2002, and funding's really reduced, overall funding, and Bonnie Severchek, who was the deputy at the time, asked me to work with her, because of my budget background at Liberty, to look through budgets and look for cost savings, and we reduced department budgets extensively at that point. And then, things were going along pretty well until the recession hit, and I will tell you, it felt like the lights went out in And I will tell you, it felt like the lights went out in Lynchburg in about October of two thousand and eight. And at that point, we really looked at budgeting different. So since two thousand and eight, we've had a sixteen-point-eight population growth. So from sixty-eight-thousand to about eighty-thousand. We've added service delivery areas in Windhurst, Cornerstone, um, downtown Liberty University, Timberlake area, Lakeside area. Our city has really grown. So also in Parkers and Recreation, we've added four parks, um, which with total a hundred-and-five acres that has to be maintained, bode, all of that. Three-point-six-eight miles of trails. The city's done some really good stuff since the recession. We've added the Riverside Park Sprayground, the Park Fountain. We've taken over Fort Early Building from a private company, um, the Rot- the Rotary Sentinel Skate Park and the Jackson Heights Art Studio. So, and I, and I say all of this because when you look at two thousand and eight general fund full-time equivalent positions, and you look at the adopted budget for twenty-twenty-three, the general fund has grown by two-point-five-four positions. Public safety during that time period has grown by twenty-nine-point-eight-two positions. So which means all the other departments were reduced and public safety grew. And, and this, that's not a judgment that it shouldn't have. It's just, we had to put the money where the services needed to be. And departments over that period from two thousand and eight on, most years were either directed, department directors were directed to either flat fund or reduce their budgets. And, um, it really was very difficult. And I say all of this because when I show you what departments cut, it was really, really difficult. But I, and I don't want you to say, well, where's the rest of it? Because really, between two thousand and eight and current, we really have sucked up a lot. I know in financial services, I've absorbed twelve F T E. And with these cuts, I will absorb another two and a half, of which had to tell people their jobs were on the chopping block today. So, um, these were very, very difficult for departments. Oh, and I just killed it, okay. So when we look at closing the gap, so once we added all the public safety, adjusted the revenue, we're really looking a gap of about nine-million dollars. So for the department service level, we cut about one-point-three-million dollars. And, and these, these were, I don't, don't take this lightly, because these were very, very difficult. So we'll close the Templeton Senior Center. Um, I will be closing the collections teller window permanently. We'll eliminate the hanging of banners and holiday decorations, the contribution for Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, the State of the City event. We reduce funding for the contracted services for snow removal. Also, the contracted service for right-of-way mowing and tree cutting. We reduce funding for demolitions, the onsite citywide training, occupational health. I've reduced staffing in the library for youth and adult services programs. We reduce funding for events for public relations, um, and also for the contracted services for camera operators to make sure they're there for all events. Reduce staffing and hours for the museums. Also shorten the pool day season, or the pool season by ten days. And then some various and miscellaneous reductions, um, to operating items, such as office supplies, training, um, all kinds of things. So, um, it may not seem like a lot, but those were really painful. And I know you all were provided, um, last night, um, the complete list. So you should have that, and I'd be happy to walk through that if you need it. Also, to close this nine-million-dollar gap, um, we're looking at, we did not budget managed vacancy. So this would include two-million dollars for managed vacancy, which means we need to be careful about filling positions and that type of thing, so we have this money. Two-point-six-million, this is for, um, funding our vehicle replacements. You've seen these before. Um, so we would fund our vehicle replacements with one-time money instead of recurring money, which is just a little bit riskier than what I like to do. Um, six-hundred-thousand dollars would be added for revenue from state and federal to make sure we're maxing out that eighty-five percent funding for human services. Uh, we finally got the Blue Ridge Regional Jail Authority budget. Um, we had plugged in a number based on what our current per diems are and the number, um, and what they asked us to budget is about four-hundred-thousand dollars less, so we've included that. Councilman Dolan and Vice Mayor Faraldi had mentioned eliminating city council salaries, so that's seventy-seven-thousand dollars with the social security, um, included. And then the, eliminate the discretionary external service providers. There was a question about this, so this is thirty-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars for, um, the Alliance for Community Living, the Community College Board, Virginia Legal Aid Society, and Amazement Square. So after that, um, that gets us about, to, almost two-point-one-million dollars. I'll use Greg's rounding. So with this, um, we would need some further instruction about how to close this. Um, Councilman Hegelson brought up, um, flat funding schools, which would take care of this gap, or we would need to use one-time funding. So this, um, just reflects that ongoing, um, gap reduction strategies there, which just plugged in the school funding or one-time use of funds to get to your nine-million dollars. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, thank you, Donna. You know, I guess with what you put on here, as I, as the segue, as you mentioned, you know, you, we look at LCS and lots of different things that can, that the city does that we could keep doing if we actually had some little budget constraint with the public school system. So last year, the money was forty-point-seven million. And so rather than increasing it because there's less students, that would save the city two-point-one-million in the local contribution. If you also actually just said, like, like you've presented, uh, different departments, a three percent reduction, that would take them back to what we funded them locally last year. Which sounds, oh, that sounds terrible, but it really isn't, because of the fact that the state is using, as Greg pointed out, the composite index. The composite index is designed specifically to take the pressure off the local taxpayers. So when we're a poorer community, the state pitches in more. I think this budget, they're looking at what, six-point-six, six-point-eight million more? Uh, so even if we lowered this year's funding to going back to last year's funding, that would save the three or the two-point-one-plus about another million, which the school system would still get six-point-eight million more. So you're still looking at increased funding, and, and increases even more when you look at per pupil, because we had to decline enrollment again. And so I think that is something that could help wipe out lots of these problems on the list. Um, the school system can actually do a little bit of consolidation like they should have for the last, you know, twenty years. Um, but it, it's actually taking the pressure off of our local budget and off the local services that are provided for the city. I think that's a fairly easy way and a fairly straightforward way, and actually a fair way. Because we're saying, hey, uh, whatever department, city manager's office, cut your budget by three percent. But we're not saying the biggest contributor, cut yours by three percent. That, that's not equitable, that's not fair. And especially, you talked, Donna talked about the numbers of the enrollment, or the employee, or the, uh, population of the city. The city population has grown. The school population has shrunk. And so, plus, we're getting more money because of that composite index with the state. They're still getting more per pupil. Um, I think that makes things a whole lot easier. It's a wiser choice from us, from a budgeting, where you can eliminate some of those items that Donna just mentioned. Um, you know, not picking up or mowing leaves or, or vacuuming up the leaves. Or we can say, schools, you need to tighten your belt like the city has done. Because the time that I've been here, in the last twenty years, we've seen nothing but the budget of the school system grown, and the school population has decreased. Um, a- and a lot of that, too, I think it has been because of the fact that City Council hasn't actually targeted where that money goes. I think all of us have said, we want better output in the classroom. We saw the slide last week. What did the slide last week show? Ten percent per year increase in administration funding for the school system? We wanted to go to the classroom. So even with less funding, we can actually say, let's allocate more of these resources into instruction, so our kids can learn and, and improve, rather than going to the bureaucratic controls of the administration. So I think this is a very, uh, palatable, easy plan. It's fair, it's equitable. We're asking other departments to cut their budgets by three percent. And you see lots of different laundry list. The school system can actually still increase their budget because the state's giving so much more. Uh, but yet it frees up the local taxpayers' resources, and that's exactly what the composite index is about. The composite index says, when the state pitches in more, that can take the pressure off the local taxpayers. That's exactly what this is for. And I'm thankful that our state delegation worked so hard to get more funding to our Lynchburg City Schools, so just so it can take the pressure off our local taxpayer and help us balance our budget at that eighty-nine cents. I think that's a very easy, uh, very palatable, uh, maneuver.
I just want to clarify one thing, though. We would still need to take the department cuts, even if we flat-funded schools, and that would, that would close the gap. But those cuts to departments and services would still be in there.
So if you're, if, the departments are being cut by three percent, and flat funding, by definition of flat funding, is not a cut to the school system. So a three percent reduction in the school system out of the forty-point-seven-million local.
I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah.
But you had said something that, so we wouldn't have to cut services. I'm saying that tho- these cuts would stand, and that this would close the gap if we level-funded schools, so that's fine.
So what I'm saying is, is what we need to do is level fund schools last, where they, we gave them last year, like thirty-nine and a half million. Thirty-nine and a half million, not this year's budget of forty-point-seven million.
Oh, okay.
Three percent reduction on, uh, FY twenty-twenty-three budget.
On the thirty-nine, yes, on the forty-point-seven.
I did not understand that.
Because again, and there's less kids. And, and we're asking social services and, you know, the city manager's office and all these others to say, hey, tighten your belt, so.
Are you still, you still have other things you're going to present, or is that it?
The transitioning, uh, there was a question posed by Councilmember Dolan about ninety-nine cents. So the next slide will show, uh, what that looks like.
We won't go there yet, then.
Okay.
Do you have a question on, on currently what Ms. Witt just presented? Or anything that was just said?
I guess one more thing to add, if we could, if you can back up a few slides, to where you had the different couple back, where you had all the different, uh, all the different neighborhoods that have been, right there. So when we look at these, um, all those different areas of, I recognize there's areas of service delivery. But just keep in mind, those of us that have been here for twenty years, when Cornerstone was developed, and when money was put, all this extra resources that were put in developing the Bluff Walk, and all the Timberlake area growth. Before every rezoning, there was a, a theme that came about that was kind of almost a promise to the neighbors, that said, hey, I know you don't want congestion, but we got to build this up because that grows our tax base. And so now, all these citizens out there that see all this extra construction, recognize the tax base grew. Growing of a tax base means the tax rate should be then lowered. And so this, I recognize there's a few more things that have to be done because you now got a few extra places to pick up trash. But almost the tacit, uh, presentation to the neighborhood that said, hey, if we take yours from a single family, we're going to put in a thousand apartment units or a thousand condos and all this stuff because it's going to grow the tax base. Well, that's great, the revenue has increased, but the spending has not. Uh, our, the spending hasn't been curtailed. And so with all the folks that we've had all this extra growth out there, and that means a lot of growth in the tax base, which means we should be able to say, let's even more so be able to lower the rate because we've got lots of areas. For example, Windhurst used to be a, a, just a farm that had nothing on there. Uh, Cornerstone was the Waldridge Farm. That was, whatever, a hundred-and-forty acres or something like that, wasn't it, Kent? Hundred-and-forty acres with one house. One house paying taxes with agricultural real estate taxes. Now it's a thousand units, now look at that. You know, so with that, we got to eventually say, yeah, with all this growth, that should help bring down the tax, uh, the tax rates. So I think that's actually more proof in the pudding of why we should be lowering the tax rate, not a, not a, a negative.
Um, Donna, Ms. Witt, I had to have a question. So, uh, Councilman Hegelson's suggestion then is to go forward with reducing the school funding of the two-million-fifty-three-thousand. And then also take us back to the twenty-three, um, allocation, which was how much, thirty-nine million? So that would be, so that would then take away an additional, what, one-point?
Two allocation. But it would reduce, um, the schools further by one-point-two million.
So now we're taking basically three-point-two-plus-million dollars away from the schools.
Not taking away from them, because the, the money right now is forty-point-seven million. Okay, that's local funding. Taking it back to last year, which is subtracting that one-point-two, that's a three percent reduction, just like all the departments. That takes you to thirty-nine-point-five. Now with that, keep in mind that the state is pitching in, thanks to our local delegation giving us more state money for schools, or giving us an additional six or six-point-eight million. So it's actually, yet again, another increase. It's not a cut, it's increase, not as big of an increase as was being proposed, but it's still a pretty sizable increase.
Mr. Patrick, what would you say?
The, the state increase, and I looked at this the other day. Um, so if we look at it over two years, so from twenty-two to twenty-three, and then twenty-three to twenty-four, uh, the twenty-two to twenty-three increase is about four-point-seven million. The twenty-three to twenty-four increase, still a little bit up in the air. So the governor proposed about four-point-three million. Uh, thus, what they've adopted, what they're calling the skinny budget, um, is, uh, two-point-five, two-point-six. Thus, but there's still discussion going on between Senate and the House. Senate number was about six-point-eight, it was, it was quite a bit. And the House number was a little under four. So, so all in, there's, there's probably going to be somewhere between a three and four-and-a-half-million-dollar increase from twenty-three to twenty-four, so it's, it's still a substantial increase.
Okay, can you remind me, between the two, or the three of you, with the school presentation, um, of the money that they were requesting from us, how much of that was dependent on, um, the fifteen-fifty? And the raises that they were asking for?
I think the wealth, I'm trying to see the table in my head.
Yeah.
But the wealth of it was there.
Wealth of it was from our, our contribution.
Well, no, the, the wealth of what they were, where they were going to earmark the resources, that, that was the biggest component of their budget. If you remember the items, I think that was the second item, and it had the largest amount next to it. And, and I'm, this is completely from the top of my head, I want to say it was four-million-something. I just, I, I take visuals.
So I'm just trying to figure out with, with, uh, with reducing three-point-two million.
Not a reduction.
With reducing the school funding that has, that is in this slide, where the, it says reduce school funding on it, uh, two-million-fifty-three-thousand, and then going. One-point-two further, thank you. How would that impact the, um, pay requests that were made as far as the teachers and the other positions? From what we would be now not being able to contribute, that's my question.
The wealth of, and how about you, Greg? So you, they would have to then lean in on the, the state appropriation to figure out, um, how to fund the fifty and fifteen, or fifty and fifty. That's how it would work. I don't know how to say it other than that, and it's, that's the, that was the biggest thing that they invested. So just to kind of reflect, I think they asked between six and seven million as the request. I had proposed something like three, been talking about two-point-one, and so that- Been talking about 2.1, and so that way, it would be on their side now to figure out how to take the, the state allocation and reconfigure it to, and use also the, our local to figure out how that they would fund that if they continue to fund it. Is that about right? I mean.
The first thing they probably figure out how to fund is the match for the, the state salary increase. So out of the local funds that we provide, they would have to reallocate those funds to, to put roughly that 2.1 million, which is the, the local match, towards the state salary increase. My, don't want to speak for schools, but my assumption is that's about as far as they would be able to go. The, the rest of the 50-15 initiatives would probably be set aside, and, and they would have to find some reductions within their operations, probably to fund the match to the 5% salary increase. I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, the, the school board haven't worked on their budget, but that would be my, my assumption. It's probably a pretty safe bet.
All right, okay. Because I'm just trying to figure out, I'm just trying to think that through. So everything on here, on this slide, Ms. Witt, is, would have to be done, and then the question would be, the bottom, the bottom sentence or proposal is either/or, reduce the funding or use the one-time funds, and now an additional suggestion has been made. And with that said, these are just suggestions right now that haven't been voted on by council, but these are just suggestions that are being given to you to the, kind of then reframe this proposal, just so we can look at what it would look like as we're still kind of talking through different scenarios, correct? So that would just be another thing for you to look at. Okay. All right, thank you. Councilments?
I'm gonna get the obligatory disclosure out of the way first, so I have to disclose that my wife is a.
Put a sign in front of you.
I'm just gonna print it, just have a sign, poster. She's a, she's a teacher in Lynchburg City Schools, and we're discussing the matter of the budget for the entire school division. And obviously, my personal interest in this is my wife, but however, we're also discussing an entire group, we're discussing the entire education system and that I'm choosing to participate in this discussion because I am able to do so in a manner that is fair, objective, and to the public interest. So that's that, and I'm not even gonna start on schools. Can you go back to the slide about the service areas? No, the increased population one, I think it was one before that? Right there. So we can scratch Windhurst off the list because in 2008, I was actually living in Windhurst, and it was pretty much fully developed. So that was not an addition to the service delivery area since 2008. So I just want to point that out because that's a pretty big development. And like I said, I know for a fact because I lived there in 2008. So we just need to be more deliberate and careful about when we present stuff to the public, that we're doing so with accurate information and.
Well, we do pick up head cans in that neighborhood still, and we do some refuse collection for Paulette Circle and that area.
Right, but, but that is not an addition to the service delivery area since the 2008 recession because it was essentially fully developed in 2008 when I lived there.
Okay.
If we can keep going forward, keep going, keep going. I think it was the last slide that we were just on, right there. So the, the next thing that I want to point out is, I know that our mayor said that these are things that we would have to do. Well, they're not necessarily things that we would have to do. These are just strategies that you guys have presented, and the decisions ultimately are gonna come from us and what we decide to do. Councilmember Helgason brought up a lot of good points about the school budget, and when you look at it, I think you're looking at specifically the two areas where we need to focus, obviously our instruction and people transportation. Instruction we need to focus on because that is where the money goes for the classrooms where the children in our city are taught. And when you combine the request that was, that was made, you're looking at, there was a submission of, I think, about 78 million, I think, for personnel services and benefits for instruction, and that's a fairly large increase from the year before. But then also, you had proposed, I think it was, was it 3 million?
3 million.
In addition to that. So, so we weren't even getting to 1550 with the city manager's proposed budget. So, so let's be clear about that. That was never really even on the table unless we were moving money around to get to the 1550 for the teachers. So these decisions that we're making here, putting our citizens first and reducing the tax rate to 89 cents, really have no bearing on the 1550 because we weren't even there in the first place. So, so let's realize that at the 105, we weren't at the 1550. We were, how many million short were they asking?
So the, I keep using between 6 and 7, so at least 3 or 4 below what they had requested.
Correct. So there's that to consider. The, the amount that they asked for in transportation was a.
About 600,000?
It was an increase of, let's see.
465,000.
Yep, 465,000. And, and I think, I think that we should be able to commit to that. That's something that I'm willing to commit to, that we can go ahead and say, we're gonna, we're gonna push forward on that bucket and give them everything they're asking for. There's been so many challenges with transportation. I think it's important that we give the school division what they're asking for in that, and hopefully that'll solve the problems. But then when we look at instruction versus administration, I don't particularly have an issue with looking at that flat funding from last year, which would be no increase from the local side if we're getting a potentially, you said, Mr. Patrick, I think you said it was somewhere in the 4-ish range.
4, I'm sorry.
About the 4 million range and the increase from the state is what you're.
I think it's 4.4.
From '23 to '24, the increase is, it's at 4.2 million based on the governor's budget. The math in the budget book is, is actually off. It shows 4.6, but when you add, when you subtract the fiscal '24 number from the '23 number, you, you get 4.2, and I checked that against the calc tool at DOE, so it's 4.2.
So what I would like to look at here is what would it look like if we took that, starting with last year's budget and what we gave the school division last year? Let's take that additional 4.3, 4.4 million, what it ends up being. First, fund transportation. Okay? That's a small request. Fully fund transportation. Take the rest of it, put it all on instruction. Okay?
Out of which line is this? I'm sorry.
So, so take last year's actual or amended budget from '23, the one we're in right now. So fully fund the '24 request for transportation with that additional state funding that we're gonna pile in there, and then take the remainder of that additional state funding and allocate that to instruction. And what I'd be curious to see is how many more would we need to take out of administration to get to that potential 1550 number for the instruction budget? How close can we get by taking that money out of administration to take care of the teachers in the classrooms? That's what I'm interested in seeing. Teachers, instructional aides, everybody that's, that's involved in actually delivering those services to our, to our citizens in the city.
Councilperson?
And I guess some of that, too, you know, you gotta think about the efficacy of 1550. I know it sounds good.
But I really don't know how good it is in actual practicality. I mean, Donna said she's been doing budgets since 1999. Obviously, a lot different today than it was in 1999 because experience, right? And so for some reason, lots of things, you know, because the, it sounds maybe politically palatable to say we're gonna start teachers without any experience at a really high level. I'd rather see the fact that people who had experience, that's where their raises go, not the folks that are just out of college that have never taught before because everything that you do is about experience, whether you're council member, whether you're a budget manager, whether you're, whatever you do. I mean, it's, experience matters, and so having, so I just, you know, when you're looking at that as a broad brush, again, I think it's, it sounds, you know, more gimmicky than it is practicality because I'd like to see more of the resources going to folks that have done a good job, that have been there, that have experience, as opposed to just wrapping up the starting because you have the progression plans and you have the different things that we're seeing with compression with the fire and police. You can have the same thing with the schools. And so those that have taught and have lots of experience can do it a whole lot better, and that's where the reward needs to be rather than just enticing somebody. I think we're fairly decent at enticing people to come in to our city school system. The difficulty we've seen has been retaining them. The difficulty in retaining them when the 20, 30, 40% turnover ratios, when you look at the schools, I think lots of that hasn't been the fact of the teachers. I think it's been the fact of having lack of discipline in the classroom. And so when you, when you're losing them, it isn't a matter of getting in the door, it's a matter of keeping those, and keeping people with experience, I think, is a whole lot better. It's not as politically palatable when you throw out a 1550 kind of concept, but the reality is, I think the efficacy would be a lot better to keep people that have taught and have good experience teaching, as, and that's where the reward goes as opposed to just some new person, so.
So here's what I'm looking at, just kind of throwing some numbers out there. And this is totaling to. 4.324 million in an increase. So we're going from 106.3 to 110.6. That about covers the, the increase from the state. We could look at something, and, and I guess the question would be to ask the school division what this looks like. 78 million for instruction. That is halfway to their request for instruction. 8 million for administration, 6.6 million for pupil transportation, 12.362 for operation and maintenance, which is flat from last year. Their request for facilities, which was 25,002.10. Their request for other non-instructional operations, which was 42,145. And then again, and then 5.6 million roughly looking like their request for technology. I would be, I would be interested in seeing what the schools would have to say about that and how that would impact increased funding to the classrooms, instructional assistance and so forth, and all the instructional programs because, because the instructional line item includes all of it. It includes all of your, your, not just your K through 12 teachers, but all your programs and, you know, like the strings program and the different, just all the different various programs that the city schools offer. So that's just kind of something that I'm looking at, throwing that out there and saying, hey, let's, let's see what this looks like.
Couple things I, I think I remember from our conversation with the joint, at the joint school board meeting. One, I think I recall the slide showing that our starting salary for teachers or average salary was one of the lowest in the region. Also, I recall some of our hourly pay being, or their lower, the hourly pay being lower than what we even offer as a city, I recall, for some other jobs. So competitive wages are a fair concern, and we all know that in regardless of what field that you work in. And because I recall talking to someone in education recently saying that, like, students aren't even majoring in education anymore. I mean, in college, they just aren't. There's just not an interest in majoring, so we're not finding people coming out of college with degrees in education to begin with, which a lot of cities around the country are having the same problem with having to lower standards to allowing people to work as teachers that don't even have teaching certifications, or having to come in and work with just their, passing their practice, practice exams and working toward certifications on the job. The other issue that we keep talking about is behavior in the classrooms, and, you know, behavior issues are not the job of the teacher. We have parental issues that are not the faults of the parent, of the teachers, that are brought into the classrooms, and Mr. Taylor and I have walked around several schools together and had some good conversations with teachers. I believe the conversations I've had with many teachers that seem to be good teachers, and these are not political conversations that we're having. We're not asking what side of the aisle people stand on when we're talking to these teachers. We're having heart-to-heart conversations, and the reality is, for whatever the reason is, these children are acting out, the teachers are doing the best they can. And what we've heard from teachers is that they need assistance, they need additional help in the classroom. It used to be, like, when I was raising my, my boys, you only needed an, an aide in maybe kindergarten or first grade because you had 22, you know, cats running around and you needed an extra hand or instead of hands. And now unfortunately, what the teachers are finding for the different reasons that kids are acting out now, the teachers are really struggling and needing additional support at every grade, and they are asking for instructional assistance up at every grade. That's what we heard. And they're asking for help from administration, for help with these disciplinary issues. We've talked to school board members that have talked about having to come in all the time because of disciplinary, disciplinary problems. It sounds like that they're working on it as best as they can with the number of people that they have to address these issues. You can't make teachers be the parents. They need more support at school for sure regarding these issues, but we can't blame it on the teachers entirely, and I think we have to just be careful about how we put people in the lanes here. If we're trying to recruit talent and retain talent, we have to consider what it costs or do that, and that is in every single field. So we've heard the presentations. Again, it's not a political issue here. It's just a matter of, these are people's children, and again, it's not politics. Every child in this city that goes to the public schools deserves the best quality education that they can get from the best teacher that we can afford to give them, and we're gonna have new teachers that are great, and we're gonna have seasoned teachers that are great, and we're gonna have everything in between, but, but teachers are going to walk out just like any employee in any field that do not feel appreciated, especially in a field that has a high burnout rate right now. And teachers across the country are walking out every single day because of low pay and high burnout because of these behavior problems that are not their fault. So I just want to make sure that we're considering this. If you're not having conversations and going to the schools like we are and talking to these teachers and seeing it with your own eyes and understanding what some of the kids in our schools are facing environmentally, you should. I think it's very, very helpful to understand really what's happening, what's come out of COVID, what social media has done to our children. It is not all political. There is a lot that is happening in society today that has caused kids to act the way that they're acting, and we can get into lots of conversations, but I just want to make sure we're thinking this through, aside from fiscally, but also really giving thought to the impact of trying to reduce what's, I mean, I appreciate what Councilman Missions is suggesting as far as creative thinking and making sure that the teachers are getting the money that they, they need, but I just want to be careful how we're addressing it because they need to be paid for what they're having to put up with. It's a whole different world than teaching from 30 years ago. Dr. Wilder?
Yes, thank you. Good question there. I just don't agree with us micromanaging the school system. We have a school board that we have appointed, and we have a school officials that have been working in this industry for years. They should have a little more knowledge about how to manage the school budget. So I don't agree with us kind of micromanaging every single penny from a school board. We need to trust them and believe in them. I'm not in favor of any reduction to our school system whatsoever. Teachers are leaving the school system in groves. I've seen certain videos where teachers are getting attacked. There was a subteach in North Carolina, I don't know if you saw that, that was horrible, where the teacher got attacked by a student. So I'm not in, in favor of, of any reduction to our school system. I believe Lynchburg should have the highest wage in our community, in our area, just like our police is. I think we should support that. If you go back, my, we have some problems. If you go back to the slide where it showed the difference between, I think in 2008, where the increase. I think in 2008, where the increase in the, I guess, right, go back one more time. Yes, right there. So the general fund, FTE, increased 2.5 for the general fund, but public safety is 29.82, which I, I'm in all favor of supporting our public safety, which is so crucial. But it kind of, it kind of shows me another picture, is that we value that, what we value other areas, you know? The investment, in what we're making in our children, investment making in other areas of our community. I appreciate the investment that we made in certain areas, but again, our whole city has some challenges that need to be invested in as well. So that's just one segment of our population. When I look at the, the budget as well, over the past 20 years, the dozen eggs was not the same price it is today. So the cost of running a school system, or running any city, that over the past 20 years, the operation cost has changed. Past year, the operation, the price of eggs is almost doubled. So again, certain things that you better work two years from now, or 20 years from now, cannot buy you the same dollars today. So that's, that's a concern, concern for me as well. We've got to ask ourselves, what kind of city do we want to live in? What kind of services do we want? So the citizens need to understand that. You know, I'm not in favor of closing, like, the windows down, the telewindows, like, closing those. I'm not in favor of closing the Templeton Center. You know, senior citizens have a place they can go to. I'm not in favor of that. So we have to ask ourselves, what kind of city do we want to live in? There's limited services that I don't really appreciate it, that I'm not appreciative, that certain cities, certain pieces, while you live in a city, certain amenities, you live in a city because of the convenience, because of certain things you have. It's not like we're going to give up that, and just not have those conveniences of certain, certain settings we have, that we have now, like the, like the, like the Templeton City, Senior Citizen Center. So I don't agree with all of those, those cuts. I want to continue to live in a city that's growing. You know, some people want to live in a city that's not growing, that doesn't make any investment. I want to keep it the way it is 50 years ago. I want my schools to be the way it was 50 years ago. I'm going to say something, I'm not going to say it, I got caught, anyway. But certain people would go back and take things back to where they used to be. You know, I want to be in a city that's growing. I want to see, be in a city that's thriving. I want to be in a city that's making investments. Certain investors downtown, certain persons were all against that. But we've seen the investment. You know, 20 years ago, we didn't have millions of loss downtown here in Lynchburg. But now we've seen because of the growth, because of the investment that certain people were against, we have seen that paid off. So I'm not in favor of cutting certain things. I want to see our city continue to grow, and then persons will continue to live here in Lynchburg like they are now. Thank you.
Real quick, I did have a question, Ms. Whit, about the, mainly just the additions to service delivery area, just not about that line, but I think something Councilman Helgason had mentioned about those specific areas, and then revenue. Per the reduced and eliminated program sheet and chart, one of the things that's on here is the contribution to the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance. I always kind of joke about the fact that I have, like, a focus group at my house all the time with all the children I have, and all the kids that they bring over, like, 18 to 26-year-olds all the time. And we talk about how they leave the city, they leave Lynchburg and go to Charlottesville, Richmond, and, and Roanoke, and spend, well, partly our money, but their money, their friends' money, their hard-working money, outside of the city for things that we do not have here. And one thing I know for sure is that LRBA has been a crucial piece of bringing businesses to the city, most recently Cloudfit, who has been a huge asset to the city, and who I know has plans to grow their business, and bring more jobs, and ultimately revenue to the city. So that cut is concerning to me, and I know that cuts had to be made in order to achieve this goal here for the 89 cents. But I just am very concerned about that specific one, because I know specifically what they do, and, and how we partner with them for business growth and opportunity. And as a business owner, knowing that, you know, you have to invest to make money, and I know that LRBA doesn't primarily focus just on Lynchburg, but they've brought a lot of great things to Lynchburg. Cloudfit would not be here if LRBA had not been a partner of ours, and, and helped us with that. And, and I know that they are constantly working on other big projects that help benefit our city financially. And business development is such a crucial piece of how we ultimately can help bring taxes down. We talked about Charlottesville recently, and how Charlottesville's real estate rate is, what, 92 cents?
I know.
Well, it's lower than ours. And, and when we compare Lynchburg to Charlottesville, they have half the population. Part of the reason that their rate can be lower than ours is because their revenue is higher. Why is the revenue higher? Because people go there and spend their money there over Lynchburg. So if we eliminate partnerships that help bring business to the city, and business growth and development that brings and ultimately generates great revenue opportunities for us, that then make us competitive with cities like Charlottesville who have half the population, we are shooting ourselves in the foot. I mean, it's just, it's math, it's business. That, I mean, and I'm not, I'm not attacking you. I'm not, I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that, looking at some of these cuts, I mean, I'm seeing jobs, I'm seeing people whose livelihoods will be impacted on here, which is upsetting to me. Services that we said we wouldn't cut, I'm pretty sure when we first started talking about lowering taxes, some of our peers here said pretty boldly, what cuts and services will be, will be cut if we go to cut taxes, and I'm pretty sure people said they won't be cut. And now I'm looking at sheets and sheets of things that, and services that will be cut, and jobs, and things that would bring revenue to the city to help us. And we're going to have to answer for it. And then, whether we say it's a reduction in cut to the schools or not, I guarantee you, the schools are going to see this as a cut. So we can, we can, again, we can talk about it, should be the 23 budget. It doesn't matter what we say, people are going to see it as that. And I'm just trying to understand all that. And, and I know you had to cut where you had to cut to make this work, so I'm not criticizing anybody. But I'm just looking through this, and I'm saying, like, we're, we're hurting ourselves, and the safety of our city, needs of our city, people's jobs that actually rely on these incomes to actually provide for their families, and then things that are actually bringing good investment opportunities to the city. So I'm just, just wanted to express my thoughts on that. But, Councilwoman Dolan?
Thank you. You know, my fear is that, you know, many of those cuts won't take place, because we have certain council members that really want to take it all from the school system. You know, I can't, I would never support any of these cuts, and I certainly am not going to support the kind of cuts they're talking about to the school system. I think it is very, very nearsighted not to look at recruiting good talent, and you say you reward people for being there for a long time. Well, you do that too, but you also, and you said, we're like one of the lowest-paying teachers, we're like the second lowest in the entire state, I believe. Well, maybe, I can't remember if that was last year.
Excuse me, I just said, maybe I don't, I'm not lying, Councilmember Missions. I
think that is very rude of you to say that, by the way. I said, a little unnerving when you have people accuse you of lying, when you say, I think. I did use that statement, by the way. Especially when you posture yourself the way you do. Anyway, not supporting them, not supporting the 89 cents.
Thank you. Councilwoman Helgason?
You know, so with that, I guess, several things. Getting back to the, the need to right-size our school system. You know, I know you've mentioned that, oh, don't wag the finger at the teachers, and I'm not. But I'm wagging the fact that the teachers are leaving because there's, they're not able to have discipline in their schools, in the schools. A teacher just recently, I know, left because she had a problem in her class. She sent him to the principal's office. The kid came back with a lollipop. As opposed to having discipline, it's kind of almost like a reward. I'm very familiar with a teacher that is still disabled today, that got pushed down the stairs at Perrymont Elementary School. With that, we've had a previous administration, the superintendent, that said, oh, we don't need to be, to, to take bad apples out of the classroom. And what have we seen? We've seen lots of problems. And so with that, we are focusing, and my focus isn't on saying, oh, it's the teacher's fault, because obviously, they're trying to teach. But when they send a kid to the administration and the principal's office, there should be consequences. It shouldn't be just come back with a lollipop. Secondly, with regarding right-sizing our schools, we now look at the numbers. We look at the numbers, there's about 7,400 kids in the public school system. There's 1,600 employees. Just do the math on that, rascal. I mean, that, that isn't, that's amazing. When we look at that, where the ability needs to be, and I know you think it's just because I want to cut the school system. It isn't a matter of cutting the school system. It's a matter of these last two decades, I've watched nothing but the, the bureaucracy has grown, the performance has declined, the number of families that pay taxes in Lynchburg that say, we're going to send our kids elsewhere, has skyrocketed. But yet, the number of, of employees per student has got to be an abysmal amount. With that, we need to right-size the schools. And so the amount of money that we give them, I don't think it's anywhere near, you know, anything of tragedy. When you go from 7,400 students and 1,600 employees to 1,500 employees, is that still a, a ratio that's unbelievably high? You look at the staffing ratios with regarding Lynchburg compared to the state averages, we're some of the highest staffing ratios in the entire state, when you compare that with the, the children, the ADM. We're some of the highest. And so with that, some of those raises have been put by the wayside, because the school system has said, we need more and more employees, and that's where the raises went, to more and more, where you have 7,400 students and 1,600 employees. That's where part of the raise went. Part of the raise went also to the administration. I think if we just quit using political speak, but actually say, here's the funds that you're going to get, we need to improve the schools, we need you to actually be very good fiscal stewards of the funds that we've given you, instead of waiting 20 years to actually kind of right-size the schools, they're going to start that immediately with the consolidation and redistricting, so they can actually have kids that go to their neighborhood schools, and, and not being bused clear across town. I think this helps on every facet, and the problem is that we've seen the rankings decline for two decades. It's not because it hasn't been a lack of effort and desire by the teachers. It's been a lack of the administrative support. It's been a lack of, of discipline in the classroom to where these teachers have left. And so, you know, I know lots of people are going to act like this is going to be devastating and destructive, but it's actually an increase from last year. Even if we go back to last year's funding, I think it helps the city to be able to not have to do all those other types of things, so they can still provide services to the 80-some thousand citizens of Lynchburg by restricting some of the money that would go to the 7,400 students of Lynchburg. I think that's prudent. The largest budget that we have in our whole budget is the local contribution that we give to the school system. More than we give to police and fire, and more than we give to finance and public works, and that's the largest one that we got. Our city is serving 81,000 people. Our school system serves 7,400 kids. Granted, it's a very difficult task, I get it. But we need to right-size that school system. And how we do that needs to be a function of working with the school board to demand that accountability, and make sure that they do it. They'll be great stewards, and they'll be happy with the money that we give them. They'll kick and moan, but say, you know, we got more than we had last year. We can still do it, and we can perform. And I think if there's, if we quit giving lollipops to behavior problems and having discipline, I think more of our teachers would stay. And I think more families would bring their kids to the school system. You know, they don't want to bring their kids to the school system when there's behavior problems. So, anyway, I think this, I think we're on a good path.
Yeah, so, you know, with, there's a lot, a lot that was just said here, and one of the things that I want to point out is, I think I'm the only person here that actually has a child in Lynchburg City Schools that sits on this council. I know Mr. Bender does. You have a child in LCS right now? Fantastic. So, with that, I talk to teachers all the time, on a regular basis. And you know what they think is a joke? Raising the starting pay to 50,000. Because for years, for years, the veteran teachers have been absolutely screwed by the school division. Because like Councilman Helgason just said, when they get more money, all they do is pump it into high-paying administration jobs. That's what they've been doing. Big, high-paying administration jobs. I've got the spreadsheet. I see what people make in Lynchburg City Schools. And let me tell you, when teachers that have been working there 15 years aren't making that 50,000 yet, right? But we're talking about bringing brand-new teachers up to make that? The focus should be taking care of our veteran teachers and retaining our veteran teachers. You know, I'm looking at the VDOE 22, 23 salary survey for teachers, right now. And what I notice, when I look at it, is there's actually a drop-off in the average salary for what was budgeted for '23, and what was actually spent in '22. Why is that? Well, for an average of that many people, I think it's about 600 instructional positions. I'm not sure exactly how many of those are teachers. For that to drop off, that means a lot of veterans left, because they're fed up, right? They're fed up. So, it's a combination of things. It is not, starting pay in Lynchburg City Schools is not the problem. Is there an argument to increase starting pay for teachers? Sure. Is there an argument to increase starting pay from 42 or 43,000 up to 50,000, to leapfrog people that have been there for a decade, a decade and a half, even more? I don't think so. And that is the common problem that happened in the past year. It happened with public safety. And, you know, we're not only damaging ourselves, and making it more expensive to fix compression, when compression happens down the road, because inevitably, that's what happens every time you bump up starting pay. We're also screwing our regional partners and our neighbors. I had a conversation with somebody from the Bedford County Board of Supervisors, this last two weeks ago. You know what he said is killing them? Us raising the starting pay for police. When we did that, that really hurt them. So, we've got to think about not only the impact that has here, but also the impact that has in our region. Because if we're pushing things that are then going to change what happens regionally, we actually could be affecting the taxation of the entire MSA by doing that. And that's not right. Do we need to be competitive? Absolutely, we need to be competitive. But we need to focus on retaining veterans. We need to focus on retaining people that we've invested time, and money, and, you know, a lot of sweat and a lot of tears into, to get them where they are. Not by raising the starting pay up, what would that be, 40, it's like 42 to 7 to 50,000, that would be like, yeah, that's, it's like, trying to think what the percentage of that is. It'd be a 19%, yeah, 19% increase in, in starting pay. I mean, that's, that's a stretch. But when I look at what we've spent, right, and the numbers that I gave you a minute ago, when I look at what was adopted in FY '22, 68.9 million. What was spent was 68.3, okay? So historically, we have been adopting budgets a little bit higher than they're actually spending, right? But if we go from 68.3 million in actual spending in '22, to 78 million for instruction in the '24 budget, that's going to be one of the biggest increases they've seen in, I don't know how long. I don't think they've ever seen an increase in instruction like that. And I know that the mayor mentioned a lot of the behavioral problems. Well, it's a good thing we got that grant. I think it was an $8 million grant, is that right, that they received for that? And there's no local match required for that, I don't, is that correct?
As far as I'm aware.
Yeah, so, so as far as behavior problems and mental health, what's that? No, I was just curious what you guys were.
I couldn't remember exactly what the grant was for, these behaviors, yeah.
Yeah, so, so, so we've got $8 million in additional funding, you know, with, with that, right there, just to address that thing. And that, that's a real issue. The mayor's right about that. That's a real issue. The teachers talk about that. That's a real issue in the schools right now. And it's a good thing that we have resources coming in to help address that. Now, if we're doing what we should be doing, we're going to solve some of these problems, which means that shouldn't be an operating which means that shouldn't be an operating fund issue. And it's not, that's why it's a grant, right? So we get this money, we invest it wisely. It should also be paired up with things like Medicaid and whatever insurances are available, because I know that with day treatment, that's covered by insurance, right? So we want to make sure we're maximizing that eight million dollars that the school division's getting to that, and then hopefully, over the next couple of years, several years, we can actually address that problem and minimize it, right? But that has absolutely nothing to do with the operating budget, because we're getting eight million dollars just for that, specifically. So, I think that we could really do some great things here with this, uh, school budget that is going to put investments like they've never seen in the classroom, and then also solve our challenges in transportation. And, uh, I think it's really going to impact our teachers and the people that are actually serving our children very well.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. What I see throughout the community and in the schools, the parents do not support the teachers. The child will go to school, they will act out, and the parent will go to the school and jump on the teacher. They need to stop. We need to have something in place, whereas the parents do not discipline their children, we will have to correct them somewhere along the line, because we can't have it. I had a veteran teacher at EC Glass, she came to me in tears, said, "Mr. Taylor, I need your help." I asked a young man to pull his pants up. He turned around, cursed me out, and told me where to go, and when we sent him to the principal, she was reprimanded, not the kid. That's why our teachers are leaving. You can throw all the money at you want, if you don't have the discipline, you wasting Thank you.
That deserves a hearty amen, actually.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, and, and thank you for saying that. That's, um, it's the truth. And, and the part of the problem, part of the problem is that some of this stuff is actually coming from the school division itself. I'm going to read something out of a play that's being played at Pioneer Theater right now. "We're going to teach them to be more PC," which I'm assuming is politically correct, "the minute our group arrives. That's right, those fist-pumping, Bible-thumping, spam-eating, cousin-humping, cow-tipping, shoulder-slumping, teabagging, Jesus-jumping, losers and their inbred wives, they'll learn compassion and better passion, once we at least start changing lives." That is from the script of the prom that, that is being played in Pioneer Theater right now. We've got behavior problems in our schools, when we're teaching kids completely disrespectful garbage like that, that's the problem. That's a big part of it. And you know, I wonder if the parents even knew. Do the parents even know? That's what I want to know. You can hear a pin drop in this room right now, because I don't think anybody appreciates what I just read. But that is what our high school drama program is putting on the stage right now. Matter of fact, it plays again next week. Completely inappropriate, completely disrespectful and marginalizing to a very large Judeo-Christian population in this city. Totally uncalled for. And we're the ones that hold the purse strings for that. We are the ones that hold, that hold the purse strings for that. And it is extremely unacceptable for that to be taught to our children and demonstrated by our children. Imagine if that was the other way around. Imagine if that marginalized some other segment of the population other than the Judeo-Christian part of our community. People would be up in arms. But this woke mind virus has infected the school system so much that they think it's okay to do that. It's not. And it's going to change when we put new members on the school board this summer.
Okay. I think it's very important that they're all equally respectful to everybody, so thank you for that, Councilmember. Okay, I think you have one slide left, Ms. Witt, I believe, in your presentation?
Yes. Conversation throughout the budget process, there's questions that come in, posed by each of you, and we do our best to rapidly respond or quickly respond. Councilmember Dolan proposed, and I can't remember it exactly, Mary Jane, but it was to, to show what ninety-nine cents looks like. And so, Donna has done so, she'll walk you through the slide.
Just in the event anybody's interested in any kind of negotiation here, but doubtful holler.
So Donna will walk you through the slide. So, and, and math, right? It's ten cents, and remember, pennies, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, do the math, so it's seven-point-five million, but Donna can kind of show you how it works.
And really, what this does is puts back some of the financial resilience back into the budget. First thing we would do would be to re, um, put it.
Maybe we can stop until the rest of council comes back to prove that was said.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excuse me for interrupting.
That's fine.
Two of them left the room because they didn't want to hear us.
We will.
No, go ahead. Just, yeah.
Would, ma'am, would you like us to wait, or would you like us to move on?
I didn't notice they both left until people got, I don't know either, just move on. Go ahead, just move on.
Would you like to listen, or do you want to wait?
Let's wait.
Okay.
I might, while we're waiting.
That lemonade.
He drank it all. Where are we getting the lemonade?
He brought a little packet.
Yeah, he had a packet, he put it in his water.
Bryce, any updates on the stuff going down up front? Sorry, are you getting any? Are you getting any?
Nothing's going on.
News?
Nothing's going on.
Because these guys left, so I was curious if, no? Okay, sorry.
I don't have any updates.
Sorry, I didn't mean to call you out.
I guess I'll ask a question, since, since we're waiting for, if we can go back. In the reduced eliminated program expenditure, I did notice there wasn't a line for our clerk of counsel, because I know that previously, since we keep talking about the twenty-three budget, her, her budget was in the city manager's line. And then this year, in the twenty-four proposed, she had her own line, and now I don't see her anywhere. So where, I'm asking where our clerk of counsel's budget now would be, since there's not really a line for her?
The new initiatives were already taken before we looked at an eighty-nine cent budget.
Right.
So they were in the dollar-five budget, but not in an eighty-nine cent budget. So basically, Alicia is herself and council salaries and a little bit of office supplies, I think is about all that's in there.
So there's not a line currently allocated for her? I mean, I, I see where the council salaries were removed, but, but what about, like, the rest of the things that she needs? There's not anything allocated for her right now?
Alicia, you can correct me when I'm wrong here. She had requested a part-time deputy clerk of counsel that has been removed, and also the, um, the transcription ongoing service dues and memberships by twelve thousand dollars are also out.
Okay, what was the, do you have the number on what that, what was the cost for the part-timer that was requested? Or like, what's the total gap that still needs to be filled for what she needs?
Can we get back to you?
Yeah, can you get back, can you, can you get back to me on that?
Council salary could go for that.
I'm sorry?
Council on salary could go.
We've already put the seventy-two.
That's already included, it's something else, yeah. I would just like to know what, what the gap is that is still needed for that, for her.
There's one specific thing about that line.
Pardon?
One specific thing about what you're talking about.
Oh, go ahead.
So, so one thing that I am extremely concerned about is this U.S. Conference of Mayors. What was, do you remember what that was, how much that was?
Um, like five or six thousand?
Yeah, I'm extremely concerned about that. We took a historic action earlier this year and passed a Second Amendment sanctuary resolution. All you have to do is, is look at the organizations that they're aligned with for anti-Second Amendment initiatives, and I do not believe that, based on that resolution that we passed, we are actually able to fund this organization, because I think there was something that tied purse strings to that. So, that's something I think we need to consider looking at when we're looking at some of these different organizations. But, but I am not comfortable sending a single dollar to the United States Conference of Mayors. There's other resources that I've looked on, on their website, where it talks about if you're a mayor and you want to see what your powers like, declare an emergency, just so you can see what it's, you know, how that works. That's complete tyranny, and I do not support anything going to this hard leftist organization.
So that was me, I proposed that. We have three new council members, and so it's a great resource as far as grants and materials. So, that is obviously out now, so it doesn't matter. But that was something that I was thinking would be good for our new folks.
Gotcha. Well, I don't, I don't think that we should be sending them any of our taxpayer dollars specifically based on that two-way resolution.
All right, thank you. Okay, oh, yes. Yes.
You'd, you'd ask for a pause, Mr. Jalen asked for a pause.
Donna could walk through this last slide?
Yeah.
Paying attention to time, turn it right over to Donna.
Go ahead, perfect.
Okay, so, this leads to Councilman Dolan's question about what it looks like for a ninety-nine cent tax rate. And it basically is math, it's adding in seven-point-five million dollars. Our recommendation would be to put back the service level reductions from departments that cost one-point-eight cents on the real estate. We would put back in the school funding at two-point-seven cents, and then replace the ongoing fleet replacements, we would use recurring funds as, as opposed to one-time funds. That just helps us reduce the risk in our operating budget, and then also take out one-point-five million dollars of the vacancy funds, because that gives us more flexibility in the budget as well. So that would put those things back. So it really does put back some of the flexibl, the financial flexibility, you know, should there be a recession this fall, next spring, whenever it hits, this would give us some flexibility that we don't have at eighty-nine cents.
But we still lose Templeton Center and all the other things?
No, those are put back first.
Okay.
That requires one-point-eight cents of the ten cents.
Got it.
So that middle column that says cents, that's how much each of those initiatives cost in real estate dollars, or pennies, to put those back.
Thank you.
So in very layman's terms, to avoid currently, just with the proposal we just saw, if there was no adjustments that were proposed tonight that were discussed, or we just went off what we've seen. If you added one point cents back to the real estate rate and got to point ninety cents, ninety point, ninety-eight, yeah, that would add all of the cuts that we just saw back in. So department cuts.
Correct.
Would all come, we wouldn't have those, they would go away.
That one-point-three million, correct.
And then you just kind of keep going on there. So then you'd add the two-point-one million for the schools back in, and that would get you to ninety-three cents, and then so on and so forth.
That's correct.
Okay.
With the seven-and-a-half billion-dollar tax increase.
Honor citizens paying for it.
No, I understand, I, I understand that, Jeff. I'm just saying, or Councilman, I'm just spelling it out, for layman's terms, but that's what, that's what this is saying. Got it.
But I also want to point something out about this. This is not a reduction in funding based on what they're currently getting. This is a not giving them what they're asking for.
Are we talking about schools?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So it says reduce school funding or use one-time, what it is, is not giving the schools what they're asking for. It's not a reduction in funding, it's not giving them the increase that they're asking for. Two totally different things.
But the department level, those are reductions.
But as we talked about earlier, with that additional four-point-three million coming from the state, there's a real opportunity there to not even have to be concerned about that, because that was.
This was, this was just off this list of what we would recommend to put back. That, that's what that is, that's where that came from.
So, so department budget service level reductions, we don't have to, we don't have to do that if we, if we're counting on that extra four-point-three, yeah?
Because if we're going to actually right-size, at least we can get the right size of school funding.
I think that takes care of itself, especially with the extra state money, and I even forgot about those grants, I mean, that's, those grants are going to be lasting a long time in order to help, you know, which actually, they somewhat caused by closing schools, and then you have even more behavioral problems and learning loss and whatnot. But hopefully, that grant actually, and how long can that grant be used?
I can't remember.
Couple of years, probably?
It's, it's, it's a long, it's four, five years, I believe. And, and we can get you an answer on that, but it's, it's a long.
But that's a good element that can actually curtail that portion. I mean, and, and again, we, you got increased state funding, the, the state budget, they haven't decided on yet, the small end, I think you said was the four, the high end was six-point-eight. I think I was looking at percentages as opposed to just the amount, but the richer the local funding, so somewhere between four-point-two to six-point-six or six-point-eight may be what it settles on. Again, more money, so.
We can send you the, the differences in the SOQ funding based on the, the different cap tools that are out there.
And we're doing, we had a good report by, with regarding what's happening finally with the school consolidation. I think that's just allows, you know, and just like everything, you know, you watch what's happened across the country, and you look at different companies, you look at Twitter, oh my goodness, the guy laid off eighty percent of the people and operated more efficiently. I've recognized we're not the same, we're not a private company, but at least if we can kind of think about that, to say, "Let's be a little more efficient, let's be a little more lean and mean," because these are our taxpayer resources, and we don't want to help push our taxpayers into even greater problems with recession, so.
Dr. Wyler?
I would be in favor of the one-oh-five, but I would, I would go with the ninety-nine. Alicia's putting certain, certain services back into our budget, especially, number one, with all of those. Alicia's putting some funds back into our budget, so I would go for that as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One other quick question, do you have anything different with regarding the, you know, so I know in this budget, you had the one-point-two million-dollar reserve for contingency being basically depleted, if we, because it's looking like you're having to fill it back up. So if we don't.
With all the fund balance to be in.
Right, but if, but if we don't, if we don't empty it, if we retain the one-point-two million reserve for contingency, that's not an extra amount that we have to do to fill it back up. I know there's been some spend, when I was the chairman, we didn't spend any of it up until the year end, December thirty-first, I don't know what's happened since, but that one-point-two million was one-hundred percent there when I left as the finance chair. Hopefully, not much of it is left, but every time we deplete those resources, next budget year, you have to fill them back up. I know also you had with regarding the fund balance. I know also you had, uh, with regarding the fund balance, the budgeted fund balance, our fiscal policies are ten percent. We slowly, it, uh, ratcheted that up. Um, you know, you really question what the, the benefit of it is, especially when you have a growing general fund. That's a lot more dollars that is sitting in the, the fund balance. So, taking that ten percent, I know it's blossomed up in this budget, maybe like close to twelve percent. If we bring that back down somewhat more manageable, but still within our fiscal policies, I mean, there's another couple of million there sitting in reserve. So, um, that, that's just yet another. I had a couple of other things with regarding the reserve. So, those, those are two big ones. We had a debt service reserve that had a growth in there, about one point three million. Um, that's, that's gone. Okay, good. There, there was the, the downtown extra funds that went with the Sasaki plan that was there for twenty years. Uh, we're now in probably, what, thirty years or something? But it's still six hundred a million bucks that's been going down to general kind of fulfillment of that Sasaki plan. I realize it's called capital, but when you do it every year, it's really basically operational. That's something that is just kind of going into a, a loose bucket for specifically downtown. That's not, no money in this.
Those are now earmarked for the general fund portion, or the city capital portion for the water replacement projects. Because there's a city component to that as well as the water resources component.
Okay, anyone else?
I just got, let me, let me pull it up. Just a couple of quick questions. Um, when we look at the capital improvement program. I'm almost at the page.
We're going to be doing that at some point in the future, right? We started out with it. Uh, we asked questions. Um, we haven't got many, uh, questions about it.
So, if you're, if they're, Alicia sent out a note earlier today. And a conversation by the vice mayor about adding next Tuesday as another reconciliation before the ninth. On my list, just things, uh, Councilman Missions and others had certain conversations. These are, I think, to his words, kind of suggestions on how you get there. So we're going to come back with options, because I do think that, uh, since we talked with you about, because Jeff, you, excuse me, Councilman Hegelson, you brought up, uh, about the B poll. Uh, we've since talked to the commissioner and also city attorney, and we got to give you some feedback there on, on, on what that looks like and what it means. So, um, I think to the degree that there are questions that you have about CIP, or if there's other, uh, things that, uh, Mr. Missions and others, because I'm just looking at the time and I don't, we can stick around, it's no big deal with me. I would propose, and maybe I have to go back through the email to do it that way, or if, I don't know if I say it here for a special meeting this next Tuesday, it'd be another opportunity for us to have another reconciliation, because on the ninth is what, your first reading of the budget. Um, I think we still have some kind of open questions on some things, uh, because I have, on my list is categorical funding. We, we heard the questions that you posed. Actually sent a text, um, to Crystal to see whether or not she might be available next, next week, just so that we have kind of an informed approach to that. So I'd be poll category funding. If there are subsequent CIP questions and anything else that maybe has come up, um, we, I propose that we meet next Tuesday, so that we have one more, one more round before we get into the ninth, which is we're, we're into May, folks, which is going to be the first reading of the budget, so.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Question, and some of this might be technical. It's been, uh, it's been a long day. Um, the major, yeah, major building repairs and improvements, multiple product, projects that we're, we're looking at with, uh, the, the pay-as-you-go funding. The, the pay-go funding, is that, that, is that a transfer from one-time funds, or is that a transfer from the operating fund?
It's one-time funds.
Okay, it's transferred from one-time funds. Gotcha. All right, just wanted to make sure on that, because, and I know you and I have discussed this, when I, when I look at this, um, and this might kind of help you to maybe be prepared to, uh, answer this. I'm very curious about how some of these, um, projects are actually estimated, because when I look at, um.
You brought up the cabinets at one of the.
Yeah, when I look at, you know, fire station five, fire station, um, where is it? Kitchen cabinets and countertop replaced, right? And then I look at eighty thousand dollars for that. I mean, that's just, that's a lot. Um, and then when I go down through the list, I look at, I think there's a couple of other places where that's being done. It seems like the same numbers thrown on there. I can tell you, they're not the same kitchens.
Sure.
Right? So, so I'm wondering, I, I, I guess I'd like to know how that's actually being done, how we're determining,
Yeah.
those, those numbers. And then same thing when I look at the upgrade of, of the range hoods with the suppression, um, capabilities in the kitchens, which they should have, because, you know, a commercial fire station should.
Have a fire suppression thing?
Well, it should meet the commercial fire code, really. I mean, it's, we're kind of hypocritical if our fire stations don't meet that fire code, right? And things like that. And just some, just various items, uh, the, the, the courtroom benches, um, five hundred thousand dollars for, for
Is that on general district?
A benches.
Yeah. So that's, that's like the, um, I don't know how to call it, other than like the old church. Whether or not the number, so I'll come back to you about the estimate. Just, I, in my tenure here, a year and a half,
Yeah.
I've been called up there no less than, uh, a handful of times about the condition of, of, uh, the courtrooms up there, and they're not wrong. Um, and particularly those benches, um, I think to, to replace and, and put in, I, I know it sounds like high, but there are church benches that have cloth on them right now. And so to, I guess, re, uh, rehabilitate that area to, to meet kind of courtroom standards, it.
So, so there are church benches that have cloth on them right now?
I think that's, I mean, that's the way that.
Because, because if that, if that's, if that's what it is, there's enough money there to put over a mile of benches in there. I, I'm, I'm not kidding. Like, I've actually had this looked at. So.
I understand. And, but, all these are ones that we can actually totally geek out and, and figure out together. And I'll, I'll make sure that you understand. And where the quotes come, we'll figure that out as well.
I'm just curious about how it's being done, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. That's pretty good.
All right, so between, uh, Madam Mayor, between now, Madam Mayor and members of city council, uh, we're going to do our best, because Anna Benson, our newest, uh, person to the team, is back here making sure that we get all the questions that have been posed. We'll do our best between now and next Tuesday to marry, um, answer to those. Maybe some of the more technical ones. I, I don't know what your time's like. Maybe we can kind of get some folks in to help kind of walk through how we get those estimates, but I'll do my best to push it out.
I'll see if I can get some stuff sent to you.
Okay, cool. And then some of these other questions, and, and if there are more, uh, what I'd say, folks, is next Tuesday feels kind of like our last go at it, right? And so we're going to do our best to make sure that we've captured everything here and give you the options that gives, you know, what we're trying to get is that balanced budget, right? So, um, Madam Mayor, with that, I give it back to you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation and getting through it, and I, and all the time you took to put it together. Because I know the public doesn't see all the emails, but there's lots of emails, lots of questions, and lots of last-minute questions, so I appreciate you guys being so, uh, on top of things. Okay, we'll move on to roll call. Dr. Wylder.
Okay, um, we lost, I think I mentioned the last time, we did lose two great citizens in our community. Um, Aubrey Barber from the, um, the temperature, well, Rec Center, Yoda Center, um, a great city community leader that, um, called it the mayor of Pemberhill. And also Coach Rufus Knight was a coach from Heritage High School. He passed away as well. We did send letters from the city to those two, um, great men in our community. Um, thank you, Mayor, for, for doing that. And also today, we were with the Attorney General at the University of Lynchburg for the operation ceasefire. Our police chief was there, the police chief of Bonoka, all the county areas was there as well. Bought some funds they had to work on, like gang violence and other initiatives they had. So we're thankful to, um, for this, for this, uh, state attorney, General, Attorney General, excuse me, sent us some funds to Lynchburg to fight crime and reduce crime as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
For working on the project, who you arrested in Lynchburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dolan?
Yes, uh, well, I just want to take a moment to thank all of the citizens who have been involved in stopping the chat and sending emails and, and talking to me and other council members about, um, putting forth a sustainable budget, even though they realize that their voice, even though it's heard, it's not heard, because the decision, we all know, was made prior to any public hearing. But I just think that two and three years from now, citizens need to look back and remember who supported that budget. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilman Hegelson?
Sad to get the gang report. Glad to get it, but my goodness. I mean, when you look at the gang activity, and you look at the crime, especially the violent crime that has increased in Lynchburg, you know, I'm glad to see that we're working with the state police and, and others to really start cracking down. So the more we can crack down on that, the better and the sooner, because that's getting, uh, it's getting very troubling. Lots of times, it's just the, the crossfire amongst gang members, but doesn't take far for a, a stray bullet or a stray, uh, round to go into an innocent person. And that, that devastates a community. So the, the quicker we can get on this, I'm glad we've been working on it and very familiar with it. Um, the more that we can lock these people up and put them behind bars for a long period of time and remove them from society, the safer Lynchburg's going to be. So, thank them, but we've got lots of work to do.
Thank you. Councilman Missions? Oh, uh, Councilman Taylor?
Yes, uh, hats off to the Lynchburg Police Department. They removed a half a pound of fentanyl from the streets. And the person that was selling it. So, hats off to my brother back here.
Councilman Missions?
First, I want to thank Alicia for trying to get something done for me real quick, if she can do it. I'm trying to get something up on the screen. Um, but I want to issue a special thank you, particularly to, uh, the entire string faculty at Lynchburg City Schools. This weekend, we had the fifty-first annual Suzuki Festival, and, um, I know many people, I'm probably sure you've been involved in it over the years, as well as Councilmember Wylder, and they just put together a phenomenal, uh, thing they've been doing. They did it out on the football field, and that's, you weren't able to get it? I was trying, I had a picture of all the kids, right? It's pages and pages of names, four pages of names of all the kids from kindergarten through twelfth grade, and they get them all out there at the same time playing violin. Um, just a beautiful, beautiful thing. And I just want to specifically, uh, name some folks. First, Mrs. Ginger Paris. Unbelievable. She's been there many years. She's, uh, she's the director of strings at Lynchburg City Schools, as well as Dr. Angela Cage, Mr. William Clayder, Ms. Gina DeCarlo, Mr. James George, Ms. Anna Hutcherson, Mrs. Michaela Jewell, and Mr. Scott Stalkup, and then, uh, our piano accompanist that was there was Dr. Ted Harden. They just did a phenomenal job. And just to kind of give you an idea of what it looks like when you've got everybody playing strings from the entire, you know, all the way from K to twelve, how many that looks like on the field. It was pretty, it was pretty awesome to see that this weekend. And I just thank them for the work they do with all those kids, and that's just a huge, um, benefit for our children. And I'm excited to making a historic investment into instruction at Lynchburg City Schools to continue this. No, Suzuki violin. They did have, they did have one, uh, one fiddle tune, though. That was pretty exciting. One fiddle tune, that was pretty, pretty exciting.
Thank you very much. That's wonderful. Um, I want to say, uh, shout out, give a shout out to Miriam's House. I got to get a tour over there last week, um, first time I got to actually go on site. And, um, people from Pinnacle were over there doing some beautiful landscaping and cleaning up some of the rooms, and we're so thankful for people of our city. We just have so many awesome people that do so many great things, really good-hearted people that serve the community. And I'm so thankful for, again, um, the work that people do to help our less fortunate. And Miriam's House really does a, a great job. So that was a wonderful tour I got to go on. Um, moving on, uh, during my tenure as mayor, I intend to acknowledge the work of each of our fantastic city departments. The city manager proposed acknowledging departments alphabetically, and the next one on the list is the Department of Communications and Public Engagement. And tonight, we did celebrate our newest addition, the new director, Anna Benson. So once again, congratulations. The Department of Communications and Public Engagement provides information related to city government services and programs to residents, the media, and internal departments. The department produces numerous publications, including monthly newsletters for employees and citizens, coordinates public engagement events, provides internal communications to city employees, and manages three divisions: Public Information, Broadcast Services, and the Citizens First Information Center. Last year, Citizens First responded to thirty-five thousand nine hundred and one requests and questions from citizens about local government and broadcast services filmed and/or livestreamed, and a hundred and twenty-six public meetings and events. This year also marks the eighteenth annual Citizens Academy, produced by the Communications and Public Engagement Department. Since its inception, three hundred and ninety-one citizens have graduated from the Citizens Academy. In addition, communication staff oversees the content on the city's internal and external websites and social media channels. If you're watching us now on LTV Comcast, Channel fifteen, the city's website, or on Facebook, you can thank the Communications and Public Engagement Department for, for providing that service. Don't complain too much. They're trying their hardest. I think that they actually hooked you all up tonight with better sound equipment. They heard your complaints last week, and they're working their best to help. So, thank you very much. Moving on, it is also, oh, actually, next week, April thirtieth through May sixth, is National Small Business Week. For more than fifty years, the U.S. Small Business Administration has celebrated National Small Business Week, recognizing the critical contributions of America's entrepreneurs and small business owners. In Lynchburg, ninety-three percent of our businesses have less than fifty employees. Small businesses truly are the backbone of our local economy. On behalf of city council, thank you for doing business in the city of Lynchburg, and we celebrate your resilience, your innovation, and your hard work. We will now move on to consideration of a closed meeting to discuss appointments for vacancies to the following boards and commissions. Lynchburg Regional Airport Commission pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. May I have a motion to go into? Okay, okay. In a second. Okay, right. Uh, we will just do a voice vote by majority. Let's. Aye? Okay. Any nays? Okay. Motion passes. We are now in closed session.